This meeting is called to order. This is the October 22nd meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Could I have a motion to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? There being none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. You have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 8th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion second, any further discussion? There being none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Announcements, we have several announcements this evening. Does anyone want to do the first one?
Sure. So, the town is hosting a hazardous waste event this Saturday, October 26th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon at the Oak Middle School. Different hazardous household waste materials will be collected. Too numerous for me to list right now. And no latex paint seems to be the thing that most people are talking about. But there is an event that the chairman will talk about that does take latex paint in a couple of weeks. For more information, you can go onto the town website or pick up a handy little flyer at Town Hall.
Great, thank you. So, Grafton is having, it's in North Grafton, a regional drive-through recycling and reuse event on November 2nd. It's called We Can. That collection does recycle electronics, latex paint, textiles. It's a regional drive. If you want more information, can they call the office?
Yeah.
But it's from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m. at 201 Westboro Road. The next thing is a medication take-back event on October 26th. Central Mass Regional Public Health Alliance, in conjunction with the Shrewsbury Police Department, are sponsoring an event at the senior center behind us over here at 98 Maple Ave, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And they will take all medication that you want to dispose of. And the last one is this Saturday, again, on the 26th. It's going to be a rededication and 150th anniversary commemoration of the Shrewsbury Civil War monument at the center. The event starts at 9:30 with coffee and donuts. 10 o'clock, the actual ceremony starts. And there's going to be several groups there on the rededication. And it will be honoring, again, 150th anniversary and the 29 Shrewsbury residents who gave their life in the Civil War. Okay, is there anything else under item three? Okay, Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one item to update the board and the community on. I just wanted to reiterate that the town provided notice to residents last week with regards to having identified PFOS within our drinking water wells. And residents are able to go to our website, shrewsburyma.gov backslash 863 backslash public dash water dash supply dash quality. So, public water supply quality, to review the information that we've posted on there. I'll get into a little more detail later, but we received approval last evening to be in piloting filtration methods to remove PFOS from the drinking water supply. And if, we've seen great results in other communities that are a little ahead of us within the Commonwealth that have been filtering, started filtration earlier this year, where they're able to get much higher levels than we have, which is 13.56, which is well below the public notification standard of 20. But they've been able to essentially get their PFOS levels down to non-detect once they started treatment, and that certainly will be our goal. But I encourage everyone to take a look at that webpage and familiarize themselves with, both with what we're doing with regards to PFOS, hex chrome, and discolored water. So, that's what I had though.
Okay, anything else before we get down into the meetings in hand? Okay, 7:05, we have a meeting with Debbie Sendara, Post Manager of 44 Uchankin Corporation, DBA Thai Place, 50 Boston Turnpike, for a change of manager to their wine and malt alcohol pouring license. Who wants to come up?
I'm sure.
Would you like to come up?
I'm sure.
Just introduce yourself, and if you want to offer us any information, fine.
So, my name is Debbie Sendara. I'm going to be the new manager for Thai Place. I'm pretty much taking over the previous manager who passed away recently. And so, basically, my roles is to make sure the liquor licensed up to date and also train staff on the safety of handling alcohol.
And the hours are going to stay the same?
Hours stay the same, yeah.
Okay. Any questions? Pretty routine request, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, to approve changing the license, the manager on the license. Any further discussion? There being none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Rossat?
Aye, thank you so much.
Quick and painless, right?
I'm sorry?
Quick and painless, right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. We have a couple of minutes, next item, which is a public hearing. Item nine is a recap of the special town meeting. It was, again, successful on a number of levels. The articles that the board brought forward all passed. And the level we successfully was, we were out of there before 8:00 o'clock, so that was pretty good. 10 items, and we wrote a few minutes. Most of it was just bookkeeping, and actually, all of it was bookkeeping, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think the only difference, or the only article outside of that was really the water quality improvement, you know, putting $865,000 in place to continue our aggressive approach to improving the water quality within town on those items that I previously mentioned. So, very happy about that, town meeting support.
Item 10 is to review and act on the reappointment of James Pignataro, 11 Glen Terrace, to the Scholarship Committee for a three-year term to expire October 31st, 2022. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, any further discussion? There being none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Item 11 is to review and act on, excuse me, the reappointment of Francis Holloway, 90 Prospect Street, to the Westboro Treatment Plant Board for a three-year term to expire September 30, 2022.
Will we approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, any further discussion? There being none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Item 11 is to review and act on, excuse me, the reappointment of Francis Holloway, 90 Prospect Street, to the Westboro Treatment Plant Board for a three-year term to expire September 30, 2022.
Will we approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, any further discussion? There being none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Rossat?
Aye, thank you so much.
Quick and painless, right?
I'm sorry?
Quick and painless, right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. We have a couple of minutes, next item, which is a public hearing. Item nine is a recap of the special town meeting. It was, again, successful on a number of levels. The articles that the board brought forward all passed. And the level we successfully was, we were out of there before 8:00 o'clock, so that was pretty good. 10 items, and we wrote a few minutes. Most of it was just bookkeeping, and actually, all of it was bookkeeping, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think the only difference, or the only article outside of that was really the water quality improvement, you know, putting $865,000 in place to continue our aggressive approach to improving the water quality within town on those items that I previously mentioned. So, very happy about that, town meeting support.
Item 10 is to review and act on the reappointment of James Pignataro, 11 Glen Terrace, to the Scholarship Committee for a three-year term to expire October 31st, 2022. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, to approve changing the license, the manager on the license. Any further discussion? There being none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. I think it's 7:10, so we'll open the public hearing with Aziz Elhadi. Elhadi, owner of A to Z Limousine Service, 2 Boston Drive, for a livery license to basically garage one car at that location, right? Would you like to come forward?
How you doing?
How are you?
Good, thank you.
So, basically, you're just going to garage the car there?
Yes, basically, yeah. Most of the jobs, it's going to be from the Logan Airport, it's in Boston area pretty much. That's what I get. It's just the garage of the car, basically.
Okay, one. Okay. Questions?
What kind of car is it?
I just, actually, I just changed it. It's like a Crown Vic, but now I just bought a new one. It's an Escalade. It's a 2018 Escalade.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just have the same concern that I had a couple of months ago, when we had a like gentleman who wanted to house it at his house. And that is, there are certain vehicles which you commonly see in certain residential settings, such as your sedan that you previously owned and this newer SUV. My concern is, and it's a good outcome, your company grows. I would hope you wouldn't then try to stuff a limousine over here or something else over here that doesn't match a residential setting, or certainly match with the concept that you're representing this evening. In other words, I wish you great success, but please don't deviate from the residential setting and what one would normally see. And if you do grow, please come back and see us about how we deal with that.
Absolutely, that's, you know, that's a great thing. It's just basically like, when you work for companies and you just like, those companies try to like, give you like, more opportunity and ask you to get like, your work and your own, get one vehicle. Basically, most of my jobs are just limited to one vehicle, yeah. I don't have any expectation.
There's much success, but people, I don't think, there are certain vehicles that are widely seen in residential setting, and please maintain that consistency that you're representing this evening.
Okay.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone who'd like to be heard on this matter?
Yes, sir.
Could you identify yourself?
Yeah, I'm Gerald Johnson, at 79 Main Boulevard.
Just coming with a mic. Oh, can you just come out? Sure, thank you.
Yeah, Gerald Johnson, 79 Main Boulevard. One of the major concerns is, there's been no communication about the business that he was talking about, except that we got a letter from you people. Main thing is, we don't want a big business there. There's a limo there now, and if he gets another limo, that'll be two. So...
Are you replacing the car that's there now?
Yeah, I'm replacing it.
There's only going to be one limo?
Only one, yeah, it's just like a...
There's going to be one limo, so the neighbors, you know, there's a lot of, the roads aren't that wide, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, he has to park off the street anyway, so, yes.
If it's just going to be the one limo, and he's not going to expand the business and bring others into there, because I have no clue where he works now, or et cetera.
Okay. So, the name of the company is A to Z Limo. Now, are you working as a contractor for...
That's basically what I have, yeah. I used to work for a guy in Denver, and he has a company, and like, it is like, about two other people that I work with, and they're like, all their businesses are like, around Logan and, you know, around Boston area. So, it's basically, when you add the business, all of them like, they have like, three cars, four cars, but the business is growing up, they need somebody to help them, that's why, you know, I just went and buy a new vehicle and tried to register it here as just, as one vehicle.
Okay.
So, it's got to be limited to one vehicle?
One vehicle.
Yeah.
And that, assuming the board would put that restriction on the license, it'll be on the license.
Thank you.
And you'll know, because he's going to have a livery plate, so if...
Do I have to present you with my new information on the new, because I don't think so, you have like, based on the information there, it's still like, showing as a Camry?
Yeah.
Do I need to like, present it to you?
You can give that to Val tomorrow, we don't need that right now.
Okay, yeah, all right.
So, excuse me, so the limo he's got now, that's going to be traded in, he's just getting another one?
He's going to get an Escalade, he said.
I had it.
He has an Escalade.
It's already there, it's already there.
What was that, sir?
Yeah, it's already, it's already, it's already registered, yeah. I have it, yeah.
Okay, so this one, the new...
There's only, it's only, it's only one Escalade.
Okay.
The other one, it's been like, traded to the, you know...
All right, then.
Business, yeah.
As long as it stays at that way, there shouldn't be too much...
Basically, yeah.
Okay.
No problem.
Okay, anyone else like to speak?
So, are they thinking that there's more than one car, because maybe, maybe there's a personal vehicle and there's just the one?
There's a personal vehicle, yeah.
Yes, maybe that's...
Yes, but for the business, it's only one.
Yeah, why the neighbors are thinking that there's more than one car there.
Okay, and you know, you have...
There's two cars, they have a personal car and a business car.
Okay, you know, the car's got to be overnight, it's got to be parked...
Yeah, off the street, yeah.
Okay, anyone else? No? Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, any further discussion? There being none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Rossat? Won't you, tomorrow, you can bring Val that information, and you be Rossat.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Next order of visits is a discussion and presentation, presentation with Bernard Cahill, our town planner, regarding the town center rezoning. We're part of the process of trying to, I guess, enliven, make the town center more vibrant. The town is taking a number of actions to try to facilitate that happening, and one of the things is rezoning the centers, and Mr. Cahill is here this evening to tell us what that process will be about. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board. Before I get started, I just wanted to ask at the boards, if they would, the board would indulge me by allowing me to speak through the entire presentation first, writing down questions and comments, and then addressing them to me at the end. I think just for the sake of time, I know you have a busy agenda tonight, looking at Mr. Kane. Hold those questions to the end, if you would please, and I promise we can get to them, but I just want, I think I can do this in about 10 or 12 minutes, so I would really appreciate that.
Okay.
So, I want you to picture just for a minute, that it is a brisk autumn evening in Shrewsbury, much like tonight, but without the rain. Maybe you're with a loved one, it could be a husband or a wife, a child or a grandchild, and you want to go out with them for the evening. So, you go out for a stroll along a wide boulevard of trees and warm lights streaming from broad shop windows, peering in at the different displays behind the glass. Perhaps you'll stop in the new brew pub that just opened, and is filled with the chatter of old friends sharing a pint or of ale. Or maybe you're with your grandchild, and their hands have gotten cold from walking, so you duck inside the cafe for a hot chocolate and warm apple cider, and if the kid's been good, maybe a cookie. As you come out of one of these establishments, you notice that the art boutique next door has a new exhibit featuring the paintings of local artists, so you spontaneously go inside to see if you recognize any of the scenes from Shrewsbury hanging on the wall. Excuse me. And all the while, as you make your way past the various storefronts and restaurants, you're bumping into friends and acquaintances or other family members out doing the same thing you are, enjoying a fall evening in Shrewsbury Town Center. That is the vision I'm here to discuss with you tonight. That is what we are striving toward making a reality. But today, this vision is not what exists primarily in the town center. For the most part, today, there's an overabundance of concrete and curb cuts. There is a disconnect between the buildings and the public, and pedestrian paths are either too narrow or too disjointed to provide anything but a sliver of refuge for people passing on foot. However, there are small pockets that demonstrate, within the town already, that exist today and that demonstrate the potential for what the town center could be, all of it. Two of the most recognizable buildings in Shrewsbury and two of its best places you can see here on this slide. The Chiampa Funeral Home or Sumner House on the left, and what I call the, well, the coal building on the right, we'll just call it that. These are places that evoke civic pride and culture among the residents of town. But this is not my vision, this is not Bernie's vision. I see this vision and I understand the desire for it, but it is the people of Shrewsbury's vision. And during the past three years, through different studies of the town, the people of Shrewsbury have made it plain that they would like to see the town use the tools at its disposal to create a path forward for the town center. The citizen authors of the 2016 Shrewsbury Master Plan called on the town to, and I quote, "Promote the town center as a pedestrian-friendly shopping and service area and a neighborhood gathering place, to protect the remaining traditional features of the town center and to ensure that future infill is complementary to the compact style of the area." This sentiment was reiterated during the Shrewsbury Town Center study, through the public feedback process, throughout various surveys and public forums that was conducted just last year. And here you can see the elements of the vision were restated similar to what the town master plan was pushing for, such as improvements to streetscapes, sidewalks, changes to local zoning, a safer way to get around, and strategies for traffic calming. In terms of envisioning the area of what is town center, the planning department for these studies, for the use of these studies, envisioned this area shown here, without zoning districts included, and based on the Shrewsbury residents' historical patterns of development in this area, and upon the residents' own interpretation of the center, going back decades, if not centuries. But this is by no means set in stone, of course, and this is up for discussion as So, once there was a vision, the next logical step was to create the goals using this vision. So, we got to work doing that. One of these goals, of the four goals, we had established Shrewsbury Town Center as a vibrant pedestrian-oriented environment with day and night vitality, obviously not all-night vitality, but night vitality, where there is none today, or not enough. Introduce a unified zoning district that reflects the uniqueness of the town center and reduces barriers to infill development and redevelopment. Three, create a more robust cultural and economic center in Shrewsbury. And four, promote a traditional New England-style center, aesthetic and character, that encourages high-quality architecture and design. So, then the question was, well, we now have our vision and we have our goals, so how do we turn those into reality? Well, one of the best tools that the town has in its toolbox to foster change is zoning. For those of you who don't know at home, that's the control over land use. And the planning department, and as your town planner, working with the other town planner, and Kristen Lass, our assistant town manager, we represent and oversee, why say represent, I guess I'd say oversee, the zoning bylaws in town. And so, this is where we have turned our efforts and our expertise. To the town's great advantage and fortune, the town center study that was completed this year provided some guidance through a series of broad recommendations. And I'm not going to go through all of them, but I did highlight some of the major recommendations that were in it. Establishing a new town center district, design standards and guidelines, spaces between building facades and the edge of pavements to improve these, parking requirements, standards for lighting and signage, creating certainty and predictability for developers, and allowing a mix of allowable human-scale uses. So, we, the planning department, took these recommendations and we distilled them further into specific action items for zoning, actions that will set the stage for realizing the town's overall vision. And here we came up with five overall action items. I'm going to read through them, and then I'm going to, whoops, I went one too far tonight. There we go, all right, we're back. Spoilers. Reevaluation of uses, new parking standards and requirements, minimum lot sizes and setbacks, pedestrian and cyclist accommodations, design standards and guidelines. Those actions will be reviewed, either, sorry, recommending that we review them, introduce them for the first time, or provide for them if they don't exist now. And as you'll see through the rest of the presentation, many of these elements overlap and can reinforce one another. So, the reevaluation of uses. Sometimes we already have uses that are allowed, but are allowed with barriers to them. In this case, outdoor dining is a great example of that. We have outdoor dining allowed in town, but it's by special permit. This is, of course, a barrier, because it dissuades people from perhaps setting up outdoor dining. There's also the possibility of introducing new uses, such as upper-story mixed uses, where you see in the picture on the right, you have a three-story building with multiple uses going up to the third story. And as you can see, take note as we move along, the wide sidewalks on each of these that provide for the possibility for outdoor dining, just as I was saying before, they A review of the parking standards and requirements, and perhaps a reevaluation or an introduction of new parking standards, standards that might require parking in the rear of buildings rather than allowing them to be in front. Share, as you can see in both of these pictures, the one on the right's the Chiampa Funeral Home, which, as we know, shares once in a while with the church as, on a needed basis, but also somewhat ad hoc. So, perhaps bringing into the mix requirements for official shared parking in town. Also, you can see on the left is shared parking, it's not in Shrewsbury, but it is in the rear, and that is a building that has restaurants, retail, and a few other uses inside of it, and they share the parking in the rear. Also, notice that this reduces the need for multiple curb cuts or large curb cuts to get to the parking. The next one was the reevaluation of the minimum lot sizes and maximum setbacks. Here we can see, again, the coal building on the left, right here in Shrewsbury, and as you can see, the building abuts directly against the sidewalk, which, under current zoning, is not allowed. On the right-hand side, you can see, this is actually comes from Woodstock, Vermont, a variety of different building sizes, right to left, left to right, which creates a visual, more pleasing experience for the viewer and the person walking, and allows for more variety and creativity among developers by allowing for narrower buildings and different shapes and sizes. Now, were we to introduce something like a five-foot maximum setback, this could help with pedestrian and bicycle, well, pedestrian accommodations at least. On the left-hand side, one of my favorite pictures that I could find, was a 10-foot wide, actually 10-plus foot wide sidewalk on the left. If we had a 10, a five-foot minimum setback that required that the developer provide a pedestrian amenity as a sidewalk, we could combine that with the existing sidewalk and would have approximately 10 feet of space. It could either be used for a courtyard, it could be used for something else, but the idea is that you would have a much larger boardwalk and not just a narrow pathway for pedestrians. Again, overlapping with, if there is outdoor dining, it provides for that space as well. And on the right-hand side, I don't want to get into it too much, but I think bicycle infrastructure is pretty obvious on its face, and providing for that, and working with whoever we need to at the state level to get bicycle stripes in, which we now have on Main Street, which is great, so I will leave that one at that. And then, of course, additional pedestrian accommodations, we might require of developers or any new development done by the town, that we have contrasting materials across curb cuts and driveways. I know it's a little bright, but on the left-hand side, you can see a driveway between two buildings going into the back, where they have painted, this is a picture I actually took, they actually painted onto the concrete a different color and striping. And on the right-hand side, instead of painting, they actually use brick, which is the same as the driveway, but with a different color, so that motorists, this helps motorists and pedestrians by notifying... Also, you can see on the left is shared parking. It's not in Shrewsbury, but it is in the rear, and that is a building that has restaurants, retail, and a few other uses inside of it, and they share the parking in the rear. Also, notice that this reduces the need for multiple curb cuts or large curb cuts to get to the parking. The next one was the reevaluation of the minimum lot sizes and maximum setbacks. Here we can see, again, the Cole Building on the left, right here in Shrewsbury. And as you can see, the building abuts directly against the sidewalk, which under current zoning is not allowed. On the right-hand side, you can see, this actually comes from Woodstock, Vermont, a variety of different building sizes, right to left, left to right, which creates a visual, more pleasing experience for the viewer and the person walking and allows for more variety and creativity among developers by allowing for narrower buildings and different shapes and sizes. Now, were we to introduce something like a five-foot maximum setback, this could help with pedestrian and bicycle, well, pedestrian accommodations at least. On the left-hand side, one of my favorite pictures that I could find, was a ten-foot wide, actually ten-plus-foot wide sidewalk on the left. If we had a ten, a five-foot minimum setback that required that the developer provide a pedestrian amenity as a sidewalk, we could combine that with the existing sidewalk and would have approximately ten feet of space. It could either be used for a courtyard. It could be used for something else. But the idea is that you would have a much larger boardwalk and not just a narrow pathway for pedestrians. Again, overlapping with if there is outdoor dining, it provides for that space as well. And on the right-hand side, I don't want to get into it too much, but I think bicycle infrastructure is pretty obvious on its face and providing for that and working with whoever we need to at the state level to get bicycle stripes in, which we now have on Main Street, which is great. So, I will leave that one at that. And then, of course, additional pedestrian accommodations. We might require of developers or any new development done by the town that we have contrasting materials across curb cuts and driveways. I know it's a little bright, but on the left-hand side, you can see a driveway between two buildings going into the back where they have painted, this is a picture I actually took, they actually painted onto the concrete a different color and striping. And on the right-hand side, instead of painting, they actually use brick, which is the same as the driveway, but with a different color so that motorists, this helps motorists and pedestrians by notifying motorists that, hey, there's pedestrians crossing here and there's not motorized vehicles, so look out. Right? It highlights it for everyone. Next, we have the possibility of introducing design standards for the town center or guidelines. Standards are, for those who don't know, standards are considered in professional circles to be requirements, whereas guidelines are optional but are preferred by the town. And these things, again, can be part of the greater discussion. What parts of, say, on the left-hand side do we want to see for architecture? Could it be a punch list that we introduce that says, pick five out of the ten of these? We want to see wide windows. We want to see setback door fronts. That would be design standards. We could do guidelines and say, you must, you know, we want to see separate colors, but we're not going to tell you which colors they're going to be because that's micromanaging the project. On the right-hand side, we have standards and guidelines for signage. These are your, what you see around New England, blade signs. Blade signs typically are of materials that are more, I guess you'd call them natural materials. And if you can see, I don't know if you've seen that picture, but there are lights shining on them rather than away from the building. So, it brings attention to it. These signs are not internally lit. They aren't the plastic big box signs. Right? We're trying to bring some kind of, I don't want to say classy, but higher-end design to the town center and give it its own kind of feel and its own kind of texture versus, say, large shopping centers and elsewhere, because this is going to be different than that, right? So, that would be something else we could bring into the town center. And finally, you can see the red outline that I had shown you earlier, but this is it showing you the five different zoning districts that currently exist in what might be considered the town center area. As you can see, this could create lots of confusion for developers, for homeowners, for landowners, quite frankly, anyone else, and that these can create barriers by not understanding where these zones lie and also by restricting possibilities for what could be and where it could be. So, these are discussions that we're going to have to have throughout this process, but I think it's a discussion worth having. And you can see in orange, just so you know, the orange is kind of where Maple Ave goes up and then around the corner and it stops right by the library. That is the limited business district right now. So, this is where all of you come in, you, the selectmen, and you, the public at home and in this room. And based on the results, how are we going to move forward, right? Based on the results of the study and tonight's presentation, one of the major questions is, are the presented goals and objectives for the town center still valid and relevant? Two, what do you see as the limits or border of the town center? Three, would you feel comfortable with taller buildings than there are today along Maple Avenue, Main Street, or North Grafton, Northern Grafton Street? Where would those boundaries lie? And are there newer, different uses that you would like to see in the town center? I can think of a few, but I'm not going to get into maybe them tonight. And finally, before I answer your questions, I want to make a note regarding planning and zoning. I know most of you on the, not the planning board, Portis Selectmen, understand this, but I want everyone to understand that zoning sets parameters for how land can be used. It doesn't actually make development happen. It doesn't make info happen. What it does is provide the possibility for it. And the development in the town center, as it states up here, would still require maybe enlightened, responsible landowners and enlightened landowners, enlightened developers, financiers to finance it, and skilled architects and builders who understand it. New zoning would only impact new development in the town center, and I think this is important. The new zoning, were it to be adopted, were it to be introduced and adopted, would not force existing buildings to change what they are. Avidia Bank, if this were passed, for example, would not need to tear down its building tomorrow if it was passed today. Nothing would change until someone decided to change it to meet those new bylaws. What it does provide is existing and future owners or and/or developers with new opportunities and possibilities for developing their property. It opens a door, but it's up to someone else to walk in. And we provide those parameters. And that was the discussion tonight about, and what we're looking for, about what will those guidelines be? What will those standards be? And how do we want to control them? And uses. And with that, I will turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, you had some other stuff with...
I'm going to, those are my very final comments, just to let everyone else know the next steps.
Will you just go over the schedule?
Oh, you want me to do the schedule now? Sure. I was going to wait, but I can do it. So, for everyone watching at home and here in the room tonight, there'll be two public forums on this where we're looking for public feedback. One will be on November 19th, six to eight PM in the library. The other one will be on December 11th, from six to eight PM, also in the library. This is going to be an interactive, open-house format. No one's obliged to come for the entire two hours. If you only have five minutes in your busy schedule, we completely understand that. We're not looking for a two-hour commitment. I will be giving a short presentation at seven PM on both of those days, but we want this to be an interactive exhibit. We want feedback and so on. So, for everyone who come, that would be great. And finally, if you wish to contact me or Chris McColdrick, there's our information.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments from members of the board?
Just a couple of comments?
Sure.
Great approach. Love it. Best of luck. Anything you need, please ask. Two further comments. If this is to move forward, there will be certain obligations that the town will need to live up to, such as keeping the sidewalks in a much higher level of winter care than perhaps we have done to date. And certainly, as long as the Commonwealth continues to have the rights to the Main Street area, they're just going to plow snow and move on. So, I do think there's, if we're going to be serious, we just have to recognize and be willing to do what we need to do as a town on issues of maintenance, particularly in the winter. Bernie, I would also ask that you seek to inform any guidelines or what have you by perhaps reaching out to the MIT School of Real Estate. They, I am told that they have master's-level students who will come out and assist with the economic modeling. Because this is all great conversation, but if you're getting $10 a square foot and you're trying to do a major renovation that brings things into the code of today versus the code of whatever the building, $10 a square foot doesn't leave much room for creativity and all of those wonderful design elements that you laid out in a particular exhibit that I think people would love to see downtown. But at the end of the day, there's only so much you can get out of every dollar. So, I think if you informed this and other things that we do in town with some modeling from an independent real estate modeling entity that shouldn't cost us much, such as a master's-level project, I think it can only benefit your work in the end.
It's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Anyone up?
Great presentation. I think that there's so much potential in the town center. It definitely can see this happening over time. It's very exciting to be a part of it. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. One of the things, you had some questions at the end here for us to think about. Would you feel comfortable with taller buildings than there are today along Maple Ave or Main Street? How tall are we thinking? I mean, I'm like maybe a three or four-story.
I think you're in the ballpark.
I wouldn't want anything taller than that.
Yes, I think you're in the ballpark, and I think those pictures I showed earlier, the most there were were three, three stories. So, you'd have your typical street level and then what have you above it. But yeah, three stories to me in an area like this compared to the neighborhoods around it, that would make sense to me. I wouldn't wish for anything taller than that.
So, when you're thinking of new sidewalks being wider, having the different contrast, and then you have a picture of what's currently there, but yet these new guidelines aren't going to be required for existing businesses, how do we bring those areas up to match what the new areas would look like? What's the plan for that?
Yeah, that's always a great question, and it's always a dilemma for planners. You know, when we're visioning this, we can, like I said, we can kind of set the table, but it's going to, it's going to require someone else who understands what we've done to come in. Some of it's going to come down to what we can do as boosters for the town and advertising. We're actually hoping to involve the STC, who's had a lot of experience on Centec North, advertising a specific area, getting the word out, marketing and so on for that. We are hoping and plan on working with the owners of some of these properties to get them to see the potential that they could realize with these. It would be an upfront investment, obviously, to say, I don't want to point out any specific business, but let's say you're a small business there, but right now you're a single story and you're set way back from the road, that yes, it would be an upfront cost to, say, tear it down and put something else in there at three stories. Long-term investment. Studies have shown that this will pay off, that this type of development is what younger generations are looking for. Quite frankly, older generations too, and I include myself in that somewhat. So, I think, I think you have to get, and I think that's why, I don't want to say, I mean, enlightens a fuzzy term, but you know, I did put that, you know, enlightened developers and enlightened landowners. But I think maybe it's imaginative landowners and imaginative developers. And we know they exist. We see them operating in other areas, sometimes in more city areas. But we wouldn't be the first town to adopt what other towns call town center village districts. So, there are developers out there who have experience in this, and they understand that the payoff can work if it's done correctly in conjunction with what the town goals are.
And obviously, the, if I can continue, the biggest opportunity we have is the Beal School. I mean, when that is no longer a school, if there's some sort of development that goes in there, that's, that could be the flagship, the anchor of the change.
Right. And I think, and I just, I'm glad you brought that up, actually, because I probably should have done so myself. But we're aiming here, whatever comes out of this, that it will complement the plans, the RFP that eventually goes out for Beal School. We don't want it to be a contradiction, and I think where the Beal Reuse Committee went is kind of in the same vein of where this is going as well. This was kind of in the works before Beal kind of wrapped up. But I think everyone's looking for a similar product at the end of the day. And I don't see that that's going to conflict at the end. But I think you're right. I think that really could be the crown jewel in the town center if, well, I'm not going to get ahead of myself. We'll see what the RFP brings in.
Thank you.
But, yeah.
Yeah, Beal is obviously, it's going to be key to this, I think. But I think in regards to that, and even the redevelopment of the center as it naturally occurs, I think if we want to have a New England Town Center look, then design guidelines at the minimum and probably some design standards are going to have to be required or we'll end up with the kind of development that we had, probably a little more sophisticated than what we had in the 60s or whatever. The stuff that, buildings that complement the whole center, not one kind of modern or nondescript building and, you know, next to some that people put the effort in to make it have a more pleasing aesthetic. I think it would, I think it would help a lot. I know that there's probably going to be resistance to that, but I think if we're looking to create an atmosphere or create a look, I personally think that's important. And I think that's going to be important, particularly if Beal ends up being completely redeveloped, a new building goes there, that the way that building looks is really going to be important to the entire town center. The other thing is on the, on the, on the parking, and I know we've talked about that and been working on it. I think the shared parking is going to be key. And, you know, there's going to be a lot of work that goes into that because we're going to be asking private owners to share their, share their parking. It should ultimately, it should ultimately benefit everybody, but I think trying to present that concept might be a little foreign to people. But I think it's going to be important. We know there's a lot of parking spaces there. Just a matter of being able to access them. So, I think it's a good start. I think the public input is going to be really good. The Shrewsbury Town Center Association, is that how they say it?
Yes.
Shrewsbury Town Center. Right now, very energized, certainly have a lot of interest in this. And I think that's going to help the process because the Town Center Association, Leonone is in the center, so they've got an interest in that. So, I think we've got the foundations for a lot of, a lot of good things to happen. So, I'm looking forward to the, to the process.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. LeBeau.
First of all, I think it's a great concept, and I'm very hopeful that we can make it into a reality. I wanted to ask you a couple of questions about, and the fact that we're talking about changing the zone, zones get changed, and individuals who have properties in zones that change have to react to that. So, I just want to talk, explore that a little bit with you. Do you see the zone changes to be, and I realize I'm probably getting ahead of the game a little bit here. But do you see the zone changes, so I own a piece of property in this area. I own a building in this area, a commercial building. Do you see what you're thinking about the zone changes to be those that would actually exclusively expand my opportunities? Or do you see, you know, some pre-existing non-conforming use issues possibly popping up as well?
Yeah, so whenever zoning's changed and something no longer conforms to it, it becomes pre-existing non-conforming. And that's something we've had experience with throughout town, not just in this area. I think your first point is more accurate. I think we are exclusively expanding opportunities beyond what's there right now. You, let's say, for example, your commercial building would be able to continue to exist without difficulty, without needing to change over time. Most zoning changes, what we call organic change over time is what occurs. So, as older landowners move out, newer ones come in. They see the potential based on what's allowed through zoning there, through uses or the actual, well, uses as in what retail can go in and so on, or actually what the building could look like. And they take advantage of that, again, over time. I don't see it really as an issue. Very little has changed in this area in a while. I'm trying to think of even the most recent development was maybe the Dunkin' Donuts. It's probably one of the most newest buildings in the area. Otherwise, buildings have been pretty stable since, I think, the United Bank opened in 1989 next to the Cole Building. So, no, to answer your question, I don't really see it as much of a burden so much, again, as, like I said, an opportunity.
Question, a response I was hoping for.
Yeah, okay.
Can I just add to that? Can you just go back to the zoning map?
Sure.
So, another thing that we're doing in part of this investigation is actually working with the Assessors Office and the GIS Department to understand where the commercial uses actually are currently located in this zone and where maybe duplexes are located and where maybe single families are located. And then perhaps doing concentric zones of the interior core would be primarily commercial. And then another exterior ring would be more of a mix at-home business style or single-family homes and that like. So, we are definitely trying to do as much research as we can of where are the municipal buildings? Where are the existing commercial buildings? Where is there opportunity to expand commercial buildings without eroding the character of the existing residential neighborhoods?
Great, thank you. I'm also, you had asked about the limits of the district?
Yes.
So, I looked, I'm looking at your, the map in your presentation, and I also went to look at the zoning map online. So, honestly, it surprised me a little bit that the south side of Maple Ave, because I'm trying to think of the existing businesses we have right now. And it seems to me, as we're heading down Maple Avenue, the businesses extend further on the north side of Maple Ave than on the south side of Maple Ave. The post office is the last building on the south side of Maple Ave. That's the last commercial building. There's a bank, there's a bank next door. But then on the other side of the street, there are a couple of office buildings that I think go down a little bit further.
Yes.
But the Neighborhood Business District goes the other way. It extends further, yeah, it extends further on the south side of Maple than the north side, which I just found surprising. I would think that those, and this is just me sitting here right now, those commercial buildings on the north side of Maple Ave, I mean, to me, that would be the end of, that would be the limit. That those buildings should be included, to my way of thinking. But the residences directly adjacent to them would not. And likely, the And likely, the bank, was it Santander, is that one there now? That might be the limit on that side of the street. When you go down the hill, it gets a little, I mean, honestly, as soon as you start heading down Main Street from the center, other than the library, you have some.
Home offices.
Some offices in there, but you don't have any businesses. And that's where I'd be more concerned about those landowners, you know, if they're going from some type of residential to commercial. That's, I mean, I think that's just something we would need to get a feel for what those, how those folks might react to that.
Yeah, and I mean, when we say multi-story mixed use, I can't help but not mention that, you know, that could include potentially a condo or apartments above with limits. And oversight, of course, the town, it's not just going to be willy-nilly, but it's a possibility. But I can see your point, certainly on the eastern side, as you go down Main Street towards, like, the Dean Park side. That's mostly, and I can see your point, it's not your traditional brick three-story buildings. It's more of the converted, almost Victorian style, I'm not sure I know the style down that way, buildings that are doctors' offices and dentists and so on. So, yeah, I mean, I think that goes to Kristen's point about maybe if we did concentric circles around one another or if we limited to different directions. Maybe we look more southward on 140, northward, I don't know. Again, this is why, if I had all the answers, I wouldn't be seeking public input, but this is why I'm doing it and why we're doing it, to get everyone's feedback on this. So, I mean, I think these are great points, and I'm going to make notes and make sure they're included.
Thank you. The last thing I would ask is, so I think we're, at least I'm operating under the assumption that the existing, whatever we call this, is it neighborhood business?
It's the limited business.
Limited business district may not exactly be the footprint of what we're talking about, but we're going to be working, we're either going to be expanding it or limiting it or perhaps if we could get, like, I don't know, whatever it is, Google Earth, Google Man, I mean, that we could actually get a sense of what's included in the district. I mean, what, you know, identify a couple of.
Yeah.
But either that we could recognize just from that photo view from above or we actually identify the limits.
Yep.
To just help us get a good feel.
And at our public forum, we're going to have the limited business district you can see here in kind of the red. We'll have that blown up and have the lots there and the uses. And I believe, did you mention earlier, Kristen, that we are working with Dan McColl and our GIS coordinator? And actually, he's already given me some of the data, so we know where the commercial business lots are. So we're going to be having that there out for people to look at, nice and close up. It won't be this far away. We might have this for reference. But that's exactly, yeah, but I think, to your point, I agree that we're going to be starting from the limited business is our starting point and then working our way out from there if, as we see necessary or fit to do so.
Very good, thank you, thank you, Mr. Kane.
Question, and I know it's early in the process, but I'm having trouble understanding why that area where what we call Prospect Park is included in that, because I just don't see that area of Prospect Park. And I know that's probably a little bit bigger than that, but I can't ever see anybody in town saying, change that zoning to allow a building on it. I know, I know that, well, there's a question of what it's restricted to now. But I don't know why we have that in there.
So I think I can answer that question. If you go back and look at some of the historical maps from the 1800s, Prospect Park features prominently in those old maps. We included it as part of the town center area, which isn't zoning.
Okay.
We looked at it from more of a cultural, historical perspective and not from zoning. So something might be in what we call the town center generally, but not necessarily be included in the town center zoning district to allow those uses. Furthermore, one last final point is that the master plan does call for interconnectivity between our open spaces. So when we were drafting this up for the first grant that we were applying for three years ago, for, I believe, was the parking study, we wanted to make sure we're including those types of aspects and those goals for that kind of interconnectivity. So that's why we included it. I definitely don't see Prospect Park becoming a two- or three-story plaza of buildings or anything like that. But I think it's important that people get a good sense of geography and geographical space and.
Okay, I guess, I misunderstood what the red outline was. I thought that was the area to be rezoned.
No, that was, so, yeah, no, that was, we've been using it as the town center area to focus on and look at within that boundary.
Okay.
There's no plan to move anything out to that red zone.
Okay. Good, thank you. Anyone else have any questions, comments? No? Okay, well, it's a great project. As Mr. Kane said, if you need help, we're here. Certainly support efforts to make that go forward.
Thank you for your support.
Can I ask one related question? Where's the town on a policy you talk of shared parking? What if I had a great idea for downtown and I needed parking? Would you allow me to use the library as off-hour parking or should I just do it and not ask for permission?
I don't know. Where are we with that parking?
So in terms of, the library hasn't come up yet for parking, but if it was two private entities, I actually have drafts of agreements, shared parking agreements. So the idea is that, so they could approach the town. I don't know, I'd have to speak to Mr. Mizikar about how that would work.
I just think it's important that we have our story straight.
Yes.
Because if all of a sudden, for a variety of legal reasons, we're not willing to open the library parking lot, it kind of sets a tone and limit for the rest of what we can expect from people.
I think we'd have to have some sort of legal affidavit signed by both parties.
I'm just throwing it out there early on. I wonder if the church has thought about this as a, you know, even a light touch revenue source as well.
Yeah, I know there's, if I can, other examples of other town allowing public building spaces to be used for restaurant parking after hours, so we can certainly pull those in.
We should lead by example, I guess, is my point.
Right, I agree with that. Well, thank you all for your support, and I look forward to seeing as many people as possible on either November 19th or December 11th, six to eight at the library. Come in when you can, appreciate the support.
Is there going to be a presentation or is that going to be like one of those jurats and?
It's going to be, and I would say it's going to be an interactive open house where people can come in, no matter what time they've got to give, to give us their feedback. There will be a presentation at 7:00 PM each of those nights, a short presentation, but you don't have to be there for that if your schedule doesn't allow.
No, I was just wondering what, if this is going to be, the first meetings are going to be informative meetings?
Uh, I look.
Solicit some feedback, but I remember a wonderful, we had maps and we started.
We're going to do all of that. Mm-hmm, we're going to have dot voting, we're going to have interactive. We're trying to look at, like, maybe some 3D modeling that we can use, so.
I was just wondering what, how the process is going to work.
At the very least, everyone comment.
Yeah, right.
Shout their opinions at me, that's fine, but we need that feedback, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next order of business is to have a presentation on the Pays-You-Throw analysis and recommendations. And in a moment, I understand Mr. Snowden is going to make that presentation.
Mr. Cahill derailed us, I must say.
All right.
Evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. So I'm looking forward to reviewing the Pays-You-Throw fee analysis that was conducted as our first initial step into understanding the assumptions that we want to make for the solid waste enterprise and how we believe it should operate. All right, so, page down. All right, so the approach that the analysis took was to first develop a recommendation for the FY '21 through FY '25 for the fees that comprise revenue in the solid waste enterprise. We'll go into this more detail as we continue, but right now, for the small bags, the rules would go from $3.75 to $5.50. Large, on this recommendation, yes, sir?
Stop for a second. Just so people have context of why we're even talking.
Oh, of course, yeah.
Could you or Mr. Mizikar explain why we're even doing this exercise now? And we know it's because of the new contract, but why are we doing it instead of just diving right in?
Yeah.
So if people watching understand, why are we talking about this?
Of course, yep. So this is, provides a quick snapshot and a helpful tool as a needs assessment. This, on the horizontal axis, you'll see fiscal years '09 through 2020, gets us to this current budgeted year. There is also a vertical axis for the tax levy impact, and then the percentage of the enterprise costs that has been imposed on the tax levy. If you look at FY '12 through FY '19, the town, the budgeted expenditures and the tax levy percentage were pretty consistent. Obviously, there were price increases as we were going along, but we were pretty close to about the 49% to 50%. The bump in '14 was the final year of the previous contract, two contracts ago, I apologize. And the bump from FY '19 to '20 is the change in the current contract. At this point, you may be aware that one of the larger financial impacts has been the changes in the recycling market. The town now pays a disposal fee analogous to our tipping fee with Wheel Abraider, with a separate contractor to process and dispose of our recycled materials. In the event that the markets change, the town will receive revenue from that, but at this point in time, it's more of a disposal fee for recycles. In addition, another cost impact of that roughly 8% increase from FY '19 and '20 was the previous contract that just ended, the cost for the service didn't match the CPI levels over the years. So it was financially advantageous for the town from '15 to '19, but regardless of collector or hauler, the town was going to see a significant increase in FY '20. And that coupled with the changes in the recycling market basically get us to the point now where our tax levy is budgeted at 57% of the expenditures for the enterprise. And that's the snapshot of the needs assessment. The overarching assumption of this research was that we want to return the tax levy impact to close to 50% again. 50% of the costs of the solid waste enterprise are covered by the pays-you-throw fees, and 50% are covered by the tax levy. In doing that, it allows the town larger opportunities to use that tax levy funding for other things that the town really could use them for. So that is the initial snapshot.
All right.
Can I just ask a follow-up?
Of course.
Regardless of who got the contract, if there was an increase in the cost of collection, recycling, et cetera, we'd be facing the same issue.
Correct.
Okay.
And actually, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, well, maybe you were going to say this, but the low bid was basically 20% higher than what we're currently paying, right?
I may be misunderstanding your statement.
The low bid, the first year of this bid.
Yeah.
Is about 20% higher than what the bid was at the end of the previous contract.
That is exactly.
Or the cost was at the end.
And the biggest reason is the CPI change for the contracted workers on that. And the town selected the hauler that was most advantageous on the service provision, but it actually also was the lowest bid. So to your point, regardless of hauler, we would have seen at least this 20% or so increase on the collections.
Yeah, and then my only point was that regardless of who got the job, prices based on the bids would have gone up. And that's the basis for this issue of going out of kilter.
That's exactly right.
Thank you.
And to continue off of that, something that the town did to help sort of maintain its recycling costs was go into contract with the recycling center separate, so that the town has sort of more control over its costs and the ensuing costs from the recycled materials, as opposed to letting that be handled through the hauler. We have a separate agreement from the hauler to handle our recycled materials.
All right.
So the approach was, after understanding the needs impact of the town, was to develop a fee structure that would bring the balance as close to 50/50 as possible. Right now, one of the recommendations that meets that goal would be a price increase of small bags to $5.50 from $3.75, large bags from $7.50 to $11.25. There is also would be a proposed increase to recycling bins from $11 to $15, and the bulk waste stickers from 10 to 12. As a budgeting tool for out-years, we also developed a comprehensive five-year projection for both the direct and indirect costs. And as is probably important in any comprehensive report, is understanding as much detail about the town itself, but how it relates across the Commonwealth and other services. So we did spend some time reviewing other comparable communities to get an idea of how their pays-you-throw programs are operating. And I just wanted to stress, one last item on this slide is, this was the initial first step, and the only way this will be effective going forward is as long as it's collaborative and transparent among all the stakeholders here tonight. And we feel that we have a good understanding of all the assumptions used to create a fee structure.
All right.
So we'll see here is the direct charges. We start with the budgeted FY '20 costs, and then we move forward FY '25. We have the benefit of starting our new contract year, so we now know a lot of these out-year expenditures as they were budgeted or they were part of the bid process. So some, a lot of these numbers here are known expenses to us. It's not like we're in the final year and we're guessing going forward. A lot of these costs are costs that the town has continued to use through the operations of previous years, and some are some other service provisions that could be seen as beneficial to the town going forward. This next slide is, we wanted to follow the practice as close as possible to what was used in fiscal '20. The pays-you-throw program is an enterprise fund, similar now to the water and the stormwater accounts. And with that, we wanted to make sure that we were properly allocating and budgeting for our indirect costs. Those are costs that fall outside the operations of the department, if it were general finance administration, IT support, and some other insurances. So we followed very similar assumptions that we had done in other enterprises, and we applied those to out-years. The zero in the FY '20 is meant to indicate that these were not budgeted in FY '20, as was the past practice. So we wanted to make sure that we are incorporating those costs as we move forward. All right. Now, this is another snapshot that relates back to that tax levy graph. If, so we have the budgeted, direct and indirects, and if we were to hold the revenue that we are currently budgeting in FY '20 steady for all the out-years, those are, that's the red revenue, you can then see the dollar tax levy impact below that, and you can also see the percentage impact below that. So if we were to not raise any additional revenue or not adjust the rates, next year, the tax levy impact would be almost 60%. And in FY '25, we'd be looking at about a 64.5% tax levy impact. And the assumptions there are basically detailing what, as I stated. Now, using that information, let me just go back, you know, and the tax levy dollar amount, we worked to develop a series of scenarios that could help adjust the impact of the tax levy. These are, these are seven scenarios here that had different percentage increases. One of the scenarios, the top one, was what we developed from the comparable communities. The seventh one was if we were to increase it 100%. I'm not suggesting that, but it is a good guideline to understand what would happen if we did increase it 100%. And what you can see is, we've, in these scenarios, we would adjust the price of the small bags, the large bags, and you see the revenue that would be estimated from each one. If the assumption of, or the designed plan of the enterprise is to have a 50/50 break, option five, which proposes a 47% increase to small bags and a 50% increase to large bags, would be the most effective at achieving that. Now, averaging all the bags sold over the years, we can see an average household impact of 78 cents a week or $41 a year. Now, what we're doing on there is we're taking the roughly 700,000 bags that are sold a year, we're dividing that across. We're dividing that across all the households, so it's roughly one small and one large bag every other week. That's another assumption, but it's just another way to analyze this data. So if you were, if you only use one small bag a week, you could figure out that the variance that you would be seeing is about 35 cents a week. Does that make sense?
Maybe I was only half listening. Did you say?
I don't like to listen myself as well.
The assumption, no, did you say the assumption was one small bag or one large bag every other week?
Yes. So if you have your reports, the language might be a little more clear there. And I can read it from the report, so I'm not confusing anybody here or at home. So. All right. So if you look on page 26 of the draft pay-as-you-throw fee analysis, the conclusions are on the screen, but basically, there is 712,000 bags sold roughly a year. This was average data using average 10, 5, and 3-year data. 297,000, 100,000 of those being small, and 415,000 being large. So we, averaging all this data over the roughly 11,000 households served, there is half a small bag used a week and three-quarters of a large bag used a week. So roughly every two weeks, there is one large and one small. It's a little bit more than that, but that's, does that make sense? Obviously, you can't use a portion of a bag. So using those numbers and the dollar percentage changes, that's how I was able to arrive to the 78 cents per week increase or $41 a year, assuming that you use one small and one large every other week. All right. And we can create other scenarios right now if that's a more helpful way to digest this. Using that same data, with no price increases, a resident expects to pay about $83 a year on pay-as-you-throw bags. So this increase of $41 will bring that to $124 a year. All right. So assuming we stuck with option five and we applied it to the same out-year projection, we can now see the revenue that would be generated in that red line, the tax levy impact as it would fall out, and then the percentages that we would then see on the tax levy going forward. So if this model was ideal and accepted, there would be a 49.9 percent tax levy impact in year one or FY 21. And by the end of this fee analysis, or this fee structure, it would be 51.6 percent. It's designed to be roughly about 50 percent over the average of all those five years. Now, this is a, we're revisiting that first graph. And if you look at the blue, the purple lines, you'll see option five and the red lines would be status quo. So on the top bar, you can see that the increase in price on a dollar amount would go from the current tax levy impact of 1.2 million to 1.7 million in FY 25. And again, as we mentioned, that would be about a 64 and a half percent tax levy impact in FY 25. Option five would go from a 1.28 million tax levy impact as it's budgeted now and would end at a 1.4 million tax levy impact, or 51.6 percent in FY 25.
So if we, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
So if we wanted to have no tax subsidy of this program, is it as simple basically as doubling what you're recommending?
That's a great question, and unfortunately, no. Option seven on the board here would be 100 percent increase, and that would generate roughly 1.9 million. And let me see what the best slide might be. Right now, on this slide, you can see that the total direct and indirect is roughly 2 and 1/2 million average over five years. So even if we were to do a 100 percent increase, that would get us to 1.6 million, which would, we'd still be about 900,000 on a tax levy impact.
So are you almost doubling it then? Doubling it again?
We would have to then find another $900,000 in revenue if we wanted to, yeah.
And then at some point, you reach the point of it's easier to get an outside hauler, perhaps? I don't know what those prices.
It might at least be competitive, yeah.
There was some brief analysis of the outside haulers, and I think it averaged, of the three that responded, about $500 a year.
Yeah.
So if a resident right now is paying $83, or the average data would bring them to $121, it's still significantly cheaper. But yes, if we were to increase the price to 100 percent offset, we may find that it's still cheaper than outside hauler, but it would be a significant increase.
So Mr., both of you, what if we did a stutter step, considering this is not an insignificant increase and a bit of a stutter shot? Well, how does it play out if you did 50 percent of the recommended for this July 1 and 50 percent in January or some point further? How does that play out in implementation, first of all?
So first and foremost, it obviously, it reduces the impact when buying a bag, but also has the potential to handcuff us a little bit more on the services that we're able to offer where we're not freeing up that tax levy. Although if we have planned increases of July 1 and January 1 in your example, we would be able to anticipate that revenue as we enter into the budget process and take advantage of it. We just have to be a little bit careful on how consumers would respond. You know, would they buy three extra rolls in June or December to reduce the impact of that rate increase?
A follow-up question to what Mr. Kane was just saying. With this comes having to roll out new trash bags rolls with new prices. If you have to do it twice, six months apart, how does that even work logistically?
Logistically, it's a computer system change at the retailer. No physical change to the bag or the barcode or anything like that.
Honestly, I guess, don't look at the roll when I buy it to know what that white piece of paper says inside of it. So it's not having to like reprint anything.
No.
It's just, when I scan it, it's gonna say something different.
That's right.
Got it.
So we pay, it might be $500 a year for that UPC code, that number. And as Kevin, Ms. Missgar indicated, that would be adjusted at the retailer, so that when they ring it up, it rings up the new price.
Funny, something I handle so frequently, and I actually never really thought about what's on it.
Do you want to, do you have more that you want?
I can go, I have no additional slides. I am happy to answer any other questions. I can go into other detail. I wanted to provide an overview, but also give the board enough time to digest this or ask additional questions.
Does everybody have enough information to get the gist of this, of what the issue is? So, I mean, we don't need to have David go through this for another 10 minutes with the analysis, so we could read offline. I do have, it's not a question, I guess, but more of a comment. The 50 percent being paid by the bag and 50 percent being paid through the tax levy, it's a philosophy, right?
My understanding is that was the philosophy, direction of the program, correct?
That was the initial goal.
Correct.
And I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, but if, there's nothing that says we have to stay with that model. We could have the bags contribute more than 50 percent, or we could have a tax levy contribute more than 50 percent, right? They could go 60, 40.
Yes, and that.
But if we did it, if we, if we made the portion of the tax rate, just for the sake of argument, go up to 60 percent, then there's the opportunity cost of what we could have done with that money in terms of providing other services to the residents or finance the budget, right?
That's right.
So is the threshold question, really, do we want to try to target a 50-50 going forward? It seems to me, I mean, if we're gonna, we need to know what the philosophy is gonna be going forward.
I think that's the underlying question that we're asking, and what we're ultimately demonstrating is, if you look at fiscal year 19 where we were 49, just call it 50-50, we were pretty darn close. By the time we get to FY 21, if we don't do anything, the tax levy will burden $291,000 of additional costs than it did in FY 19. And obviously, the tax levy, as everyone in this room clearly knows, is limited by how much we can increase it. So it is a true dollar-for-dollar drawdown on the tax levy. We can't use bag fees for anything else besides the bag enterprise program, but the more tax rate that we free up and bring it to a level that we're comfortable with, the more opportunities we have for other general services to use that $290,000 for. And the longer we wait, you know, which is, you know, obviously demonstrated, we have been at 50-50 and then this large spike. You know, we benefited from various things over the years. But the longer we wait, now that we know what our next five-year costs are, that only gets exacerbated or increased by, you know, 75 to $100,000 on an annual basis. So the year-over-year change between FY 20 and FY 21 is about $75,000 in additional levy being required between those two years.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chairman? As you look at the weekly pickup of the blue bags, recycling, and then the picking up seasonally of the large brown paper bags, those are funded from this program, correct, or 50-50?
That is correct.
When we have the highway guys there on a Saturday and people drop stuff off, is that funded through this or separate highway operations?
It is funded separately, through the highway.
Highway operations over time or what have you?
That's correct.
Do those leaves wind up in the same big dumping area at the end of the day, but we haul them on Monday or something along those lines?
Yes, they're at our landfill.
Okay. So those are not, those are the three columns, the three activities for which these bags, this fund is used to pay? Am I understanding those particularly correctly?
With the understanding that the general fund is covering the cost of those employees' time on Saturdays.
Yeah, and 50 percent of this program.
Correct.
Thank you.
My turn? I guess. I mean, I have a lot of thoughts. There's a lot of numbers here. It's an incredible amount of detail that you put into this, which I think illustrates just how seriously we're taking the impact of potentially raising the rate of the blue bag on taxpayers. Can someone just remind me, am I looking at, from fiscal year '20 to fiscal year '21, if we do nothing?
Which page?
What's, I'm looking at page seven. What is the impact on the operating budget?
I don't think page seven is the best.
I don't think I'm on to page four either. I'm between the iPad and this, and then that's not quite the same, and now I've lost.
If you go to your multi-chart, the last. So if you look at FY 20, the tax rate is providing $1,286,000 in revenue. As we move to '21, and if we do nothing, the tax rate would look to burden $1,450,000 and then $1,524. So you move into those 75, $75,000 a year in your steps.
So it's a very significant amount of money. I mean, just looking at the, you know, at this, and I just can't, you know, can't see the numbers perfectly, but you can just visually see that there's a significant spike. And as you said, we're limited in what we can do by Prop 2 and 1/2 as far as raising taxes, and so there have to be other ways to reduce the burden on the general fund so that we can continue to provide a level of service that the community expects. So a couple of thoughts that I had, just listening to the presentation, and again, I'm not advocating one way or the other. I still think if we were to raise the rates the way we're looking at it in option five, which is what you outlined, it's significantly less than if we were to have a private hauler, independent in your own home. When you bring in people getting their own haulers, it's, every day is trash day. There's always going to be someone's trash sitting on the curb because no one's gonna use the same hauler. So there's that component of it, too. I've lived in a community where that was the way you did things, and every day, someone's trash was getting picked up. Even if we didn't make a switch in haulers, we would still be having the same discussion right now. And I think that's very important for the public to understand that this isn't a direct result of a change in haulers. It is a change in the market and a change in the cost of recycling and trash. And I think everybody knows how hard it is to get rid of anything nowadays that you can't put in a blue bag. It's just gotten harder and harder. And then, as I said, like if we don't make a change, we're just going to have less to spend on things that are, I guess, more critical to the day-to-day operations of the town. So I just, it's difficult because you want to reduce the impact on the residents, and everyone wants their trash picked up, and there's a lot of different options here. And I appreciate the level of detail that you put into it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Do you have anything you want to add at this point?
I do. Not at this point. So, actually, I will. Thank you. So in our original schedules for our budgeting purposes, we had originally indicated to the board that we'd be bringing the revenue manual to you this evening. But we think this is critical to understand, and I'm not looking for a decision from the board this evening, but we think this is a critical component to know as early in the budget process as we can because obviously, swings of hundreds of thousands of dollars on one side or the other for the tax rate drastically changes the initial budget that we will produce and provide through fiscal projection one in early February. So in order to stave off swings later in the budget process, we really wanted to pause, not introduce the revenue manual, get this information out there, and then as we need to move forward with the revenue manual, you know, if a clear decision, if we're not ready to make a clear decision, we'll just have to provide footnotes and other notations where we're using assumed rate and what assumptions we're using to carry forward. And if those assumptions change or other rates are adopted, you know, fiscal projection one would, may look different than we envision it whenever we produce the revenue manual.
When do you need a decision by the board? So that you can incorporate it into the budget?
Well, if we're looking to not have drastic swings in the expenditures in and of themselves, we would need a decision, you know, near the mid to end of December at the latest. But again, earlier the better.
Okay.
For our planning purposes.
So we got a month, we, up to a month and a half.
As long as the board knows that as we roll the revenue manual out, we will put assumptions in there relative to, you know, this analysis or, you know, a percentage or an estimate thereof, assuming some change is going to be made.
That would be okay for the revenue manual, but once we get into the budget, I think, I think what you're asking for is you want to know by then what it's gonna be, because I don't think we should be playing around with that budget number. You know, should it be 50-50, 60-40, whatever, whatever it should be, it's gonna be, it is. Because you don't want to get in that, too many moving targets early in the process anyways. It would be helpful, I think, if we had some guesstimate of what the opportunity cost actually might be, Kevin. A few examples, as you're looking out, I don't know, just take health costs or something. I think it would inform our decision. I think we're in a. I think we're in a situation where we could easily say, we'll stick with the current bags, take it out of the tax rate, and, you know, we want to go with a smaller incremental increase. I suspect as we get closer to May, we won't be happy with that decision because of the need for the tax rate to support very basic and general services in our town. But to the extent you could, between now and our next meeting, put some flesh on a few legitimate examples, and by the way, if this is asking you to make stuff up, just say so, because we don't want to wag. But some examples from your time here of what that opportunity cost of dollars could relate to in a somewhat firm fashion.
And I, I think if we're gonna do that, to your point earlier about, what about a July and January, like, split it? If, whatever number we're gonna go to, that we decide we need to go up X number of dollars, we, half of X July one, half of it January, but also, if you're gonna go through that exercise, maybe half July one of 2020 and half of July one on 2021, just to see what it, what it would do. Because if we're gonna go with a, if we're gonna try to stay at 50/50, either one of those could soften the impact, at least people got a chance to adjust to it. It is an opportunity cost, but I think to Mr. Kane's point, it would be ni, it would be nice to know what the opportunity cost is on that. Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, just one other thing that I, I think we might have touched on it, but that we've never, in the time of this program, eleven years, have raised the rates of these bags. So going forward, if we were to change the rate of the bag, would we then line it up with every time we go out for a new solid waste contract, then we revisit the bag fees?
Yes. Yep. And there may be opportunities where even revisiting every five years isn't required because, but every time we get a new known cost and we see deviation, we will highlight that to the board and ask for a decision.
I just think it's important for people to understand that this isn't gonna become a regular thing. Maybe more probably, I don't know, I'm a little bit regretting having not, like, looked at them all along, because obviously, this is a huge impact because we haven't ever done it, so, I don't know.
Question. I don't see it here, maybe it isn't here. Do we know how many towns or if other towns with the page throw striving for 50/50 or what they're striving for?
I don't have a, I don't know if they're always striving for 50/50 or how they're balancing it. I do have an understanding if they are using pays you throw and tax levy, or if they're using pays you throw another fee and the tax levy. I saw, I don't have
Okay.
an exact number to say that, you know, all pays you throw programs strive for 50/50. No, I do not.
I'm just wondering if we had a sense of, just what are, not the number of towns, but
Yes.
what other towns are doing, because you're right, some of them, you have to pay a yearly fee plus the cost of the bag.
Correct.
I think from what I saw, it ended up probably being more money than just pays you throw, the way we're doing it.
Correct.
I know, just anecdotally, Grafton's approach was to cover the cost of the tipping fees, whatever they establish their program, to make it.
What, the bag fee?
The bag fees would cover the cost of the tipping fees.
Okay, any other questions? Do we still have?
So have we represented, are we willing to represent that we would, if this change were to be approved by the board, by the modeling that we've done, we assume that there would be no change with the life of this contract?
That is the proposal that we've made.
Right, but I mean, I, I just, I, I want to, I mean, I just want that to be clear, that the proposal that we're talking about would be static after the change was made for the life of the contract.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, I'll finish.
And then, just, so I'm clear on this. It appears to me, by looking at your needs assessment, tax levy impact exhibit, that certainly there have been fluctuations, but the relationship from the revenue generated by the bags and the tax levy revenue has been relatively stable. Is that a fair? And then we see to the far right on this chart, this very dramatic increase in the blue line. And the expectation, if we look at one of your other exhibits, that that number's just gonna continue to climb up to about $1.7 million in the fifth year. And that's by using the, the existing contract, which we need to emphasize, was with the lower, lowest bidder. So we keep saying it doesn't matter who the contractor was, but in some ways, if it was a different, if we didn't take the lowest bid, and in this case, we didn't really have to take the lowest bid, we'd be talking about a greater fee if we wanted to continue to try to hold to the 50/50 model, or we would have to make a wholesale change in outlook. So, I mean, it, it's a, it's a, it's a culture shock to everyone that the best deal we could find was appreciably greater than what we've enjoyed for many years. And that was the lowest bid to us, that we also found to be, I don't recall the correct terminology, but the characteristics, the qualities of the proposal also, we felt, were the best ones for the town. So, and, I mean, I understand nobody, nobody likes any kind of increase, but we went out to bid, we got prices, 20% increase in year one over what we've seen in the past. With the inflation that we expect, it's gonna go up much, much more. So, I mean, I just think it's, it's the reality of the situation.
When you say you think that this will be five years, so the escalators are built into, there's built-in escalators in the, in the contract, right?
There's no, yeah, there's no number, known numbers in the contract and known numbers in how the tipping fee is calculated every year and our recycling costs every year. And they're based on the Consumer Product Index, whenever we get to the tipping and recycling, so we've averaged those changes, so. But if there's a drastic change in the consumer product or price index, then.
I was thinking specifically of the recycling debt market, it seems like it's a little more volatile than anything else. So is that, is that tied into the CPI, too?
It is.
Okay, so it, what happens if, if the CPI goes up 3%, but just take an off-the-wall example, the market, recycling market tightens up so much that the costs really go up to at least processing, not, not to us, 10%. What happens? Are we still locked into a 3%? If the CPI is 3% with 3%? Or if it took an extraordinary swing, I mean, what happens with that?
So there's, there's a formula that's used on, based upon the cleanliness of our recycling that goes in, so rates, so we're paying, say, thirty, we're playing the difference between what the market is paying for our recycle, recyclables and what it costs to process them. So if that market changes.
I'm talking about the commodity markets.
I know, so, but it's, it's the CPI plus whatever happened in the commodity market. So there's a base change to commodity prices. If there's a base change to commodity prices, the CPI sits on top of that, because it's, if it's $90 minus 30 that they're, we, if we give them a ton and they charge us $90, we get $30 back from the market, you know, we, they would charge us 92 next year and
Thirty dollars.
$30 in the market. So if the market goes down to 20, we're gonna pay more.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, on page nineteen, not nineteen, page seventeen in the report, I, there is a, a lot of details on the assumptions that were used in all the out-years, and it does go into detail about the differences in CPIs that are used, whether it's for the tipping fee or the recycling. There is a CPI W and a CPI U. They are slightly different, and as Mr. Mizikar was indicating, for our residential paper stream, it's $30 less the commodity. So the $30 would have the CPI number applied to it, and then the commodity could change as well, and that.
It could go up or down?
It could go up or down, correct. And there's also a residue fee that's also in there, so if our, if all the recycled material gets cleaner and cleaner, the residue fee could get reduced or would be charged significantly less.
I guess what I was trying to get to, there is the wild card of what happens in that, the aftermarket for the recycling.
Correct.
Does anybody else have any other questions? Mr. Snowden, do you have anything you'd like to add?
At this point, I'm, I am all set.
Okay.
Nothing to add.
So tentatively schedule another discussion for this next meeting, if you can get that information together for us. Okay, that's that, so move on to the next item. Okay.
Thanks, David.
Thank you very much. Kelly, you want this off?
Yes, please.
Thanks, Dave. Okay, so we're down to item twelve, I believe. Review and act on the Philaboot fundraiser request from the Shrewsbury Firefighters Association on November, to be done on November 2nd, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Main Street in Boylston and Harrington in Boston Turnpike.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, your motion is second. Any further discussion? If any, no, is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? No? Motion carries. Item thirteen is to review an act on a road closure request from Steve, is it Corville?
Corville.
Corville? They want to make a water connection on 89 Gold Street on Wednesday, the 23rd. Tomorrow?
It's tomorrow.
Tomorrow, correct. Tomorrow or Friday?
It's cutting it close.
Yes, it is.
All right. So potentially, if we say yes, the school, the primary, whoever, they already are aware that this could happen tomorrow?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sure. Jeff Howen, DPW Director, actually here for Ritten and Pekka, who could not be here tonight. So we have received a request for a water main, a water service crossing at 89 Gold Street. Water main's on the opposite side of the street, Gold Street's fairly narrow, makes sense to close the road. We, as always, we just talked with the school department, with Steve Rocco, Department of Transportation, to see about the bus schedule, and so we, it's been scheduled that it can't start until after 8:45, when the last bus will go through, and then it must be completed by 2:15, when the first bus comes through from the high school. There is, usually by then, they'll, they'll be plating it and may have come back the following day to pave, as we now require flowable fill in all our trenches. We chose Wednesday and Friday as Thursday is the trash route on Gold Street, so we do not want them working on, because since we still, still flux on exactly the time of the trash, so we told them they could not have the road closed on Thursday. And contractor is required to notify police and fire of the road closure.
Okay. So they've already done this for the 23rd, assuming we say yes?
That's correct.
Okay. So, what's the pleasure of the work?
Motion approved, second.
Okay, motion second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approve, so voting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I want to hear David's presentation.
Thank you. Okay, I think all we have left is correspondence, right? Okay, item fourteen is a letter dated September 13th from the Department of Public Utilities. Regarding a notice of filing petition of NSTAR for approval of the 2016, 2018 Energy Efficient Three-Year Term Report. There's a hearing on October 30th at 2:00 PM at South Station, at the DPW offices down at South Station in Boston, if anybody would like to attend. Item fifteen is an email dated October 4th from Joanne Helsdowski. For Burch Road with a complaint about recycling debris being left in the road after the, after the hauler went through. I believe Mrs. Malavah addressed that. Item sixteen is an email dated October 8th from Sean Luzier Eversource, 157 Corderville Road, South Row. Regarding a pipeline fax sheet and first responder training, so noted. Item seventeen is an email, or a letter dated October 7th from Derek Grillo, Struck Catering in Worcester for a 12C event on November 12th at 205 South and Sixth, so noted. Item eighteen is an email dated October 7th from Jamie DeSidero, 108 Crest, Crescent Street, regarding sidewalks on Crescent Street. I actually drove down there after that, just coincidentally, and there is a big neighborhood south of, south of the driveway from the middle school. And I know the sidewalks are always problematic, trying to work them into an existing road, but I was thinking we'd try to get some feedback from the school committee on how many walkers there actually are, or at least their best estimate. And then perhaps send us around to the police highway engineering, as we usually do, to see what their advice is on it. Item nineteen is a letter dated October 9th from Michael Hale, SOCO manager, regarding the Maple Lab banner. As we all know, but so the public knows, the state mascot, it has a policy that does not allow banners to be displayed across state roads, which that is, and even though we've done it for about 25 years, all of a sudden, it can't be done anymore. It's not unique to us, I know of some other towns, selectmen had said the same thing, that they were told they can't do it anymore, so that will be, that, that is going to have to stop, and we'll have to see if there are any alternatives to that, to get messages out. Item twenty is a letter dated October 9th from John Campbell, Chair of the Historic District Commission, request for additional Historic District Commission signs and signage on the ward gates and monuments. We spoke about this last meeting, Mr. Kane suggested that they make a formal request, so, were you copied on that? Just see if that's something that can be worked into the budget or offered the existing appropriation.
Yeah, but, and I, we'll just, we'll reach back out to Mr. Campbell, just to make sure that he touched, he'll need to go to the cemetery commission for any signs erected within the cemetery, but we'll certainly look for.
Okay. All right, thank you. Item twenty-one is a letter dated October 9th from Marty Sueberg, Commissioner of Department of Environmental Protection, to Mr. Mizikar, regarding the 2019 recycling dividends grant program. We qualified for an $18,000 grant, which I believe we happily received.
We did.
Okay. Item twenty-two is an email dated October 10th from Shabel Sakara, 12, I don't even, I never know how to say that word.
Permian.
Permian? I'm not into my birds. Drive, on a tax abatement question of why it's as, it's said at the rate it is, it seems like it's lower than other towns. And it appears the response from Mr. Chris, I can't.
Reedy.
Chris Reedy, senior moment, was that we should look at adjusting that going forward? So would we, if we're gonna do that, is that town meeting action, is that, so they would have to wait until the annual town meeting?
They'd have to wait till the annual town meeting. I do, I did receive detailed analysis from Mr. Reedy on that. It's not a large monetary impact, but it would take town meeting action, because the update to the percentages falls in a new subsection of the general laws.
Okay. Item twenty-three is an email dated October 15th from Jeremy Thomas of the 495 Metro West Partnership, regarding a presentation of Grafton. It's essentially an economic development event that Grafton's gonna be having, so noted. Item twenty-four is an email dated October 16th from Jeremy Thomas, 495 Metro West Partnership, October 16th from Jeremy Thomas, 495 Metro West Partnership, um, regarding the, um, I guess the opening of comments for their survey, uh, for the employer's, uh, survey and forecast, and closes information to them? Or do we participate in that?
Uh, so we do not participate, because this is more of a private employer survey, not a municipal survey. I actually did go on and look at the survey, uh, two days ago, and a lot of the questions are not applicable to a municipality, so I don't believe that we would be participating. Um, however, we do have representation on the 495 Metro West Partnership Board, and we'll be able to call the information that comes in to further, um, our economic development efforts in the region.
Okay, thank you. Item 25 is an email dated October 16th from Karen Chapman of the Carda 9, 495 Regional Chamber of Commerce, regarding, um, breakfast that Governor Baker is gonna speak at on October 24th, um, at the Doubletree in West Row. Um, it starts at 7:15 and ends at 9:00, if anybody's interested in going. Item 26 is a letter dated October 17th from Derek Grillo, Struck Catering, for a 12C event on October 19th at 206 South and Sigman Ave, from 4:30 to 9:30, so noted. Item 27 is, uh, an email dated October 17th from Andrew Bruster, 48 Grove Street, uh, regarding, um, a hill on Grove Street. Um, I think we could be for that, uh, highway and engineering, but I don't see that much is gonna happen with that road, but should at least get their input. Um, item 28 is an email dated October 17th from Angelo Snell, Superintendent of Public Facilities and Parks, regarding the 2019 Lake Quinsigman Vegetation Management Report, so noted. Item 29 is an email dated October 18th from Julie Nason of Advise, um, thanking members of the board for attending the vigil, uh, last week, um, regarding domestic violence. Item 30 is a letter dated October 18th from Rochelle Palone, um, regarding the street lights, um, and, um, I think the historic, uh, placards on, on the, uh, on the lake bridge, and one of them apparently has been defaced. Uh, maybe we could have somebody take a look at that. We, we're responsible for the lights, right? Even though it's a state road? We're not. So is that something, if there, if there's damage to the lights, pieces need to be replaced, the street lights?
DOT, I believe.
We, okay. So we can pass
The jurisdiction.
Yeah, I, I thought, for some reason, I thought Okay, we can pass that along? Okay. Anything else coming for the wooden open session? Giving none, all is in favor of, or, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Show moved.
Okay, all is in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
So voted, this meeting is adjourned. Good evening.